Inside, okay, thank you.
All right, we'll call this meeting of the City of Casa Grande and a council meeting to order. Is there anyone from 9:00 AM here tonight for invocation? Obviously, would you want to add or?
I'll do.
All right, so you'll all rise and then we'll do the pledge immediately following.
Please bow your heads with me. Heavenly Father, we ask your blessing tonight on this meeting and ask your blessing on our city as a whole. We ask that tonight you guide us to make the best decisions we can in the best interest of the city and you grant us that wisdom to do so. We also ask that you watch over all the citizens of our city and all the cities surrounding us and just keep us in good health and everything and whoever had the fire tonight, we ask that you watch especially over them. And also, we ask your blessings on our first responders, both here in the city and of course worldwide, protecting our freedoms that allow us to have a meeting like this tonight. So again, Heavenly Father, we thank you for having those rights and we ask your blessing on our meeting, in your name we pray.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Matt, thank you, Donna. The roll call show everyone is present tonight, Gloria?
So noted.
Mayor McFarlane, as far as minutes go, I move that we approve the city council regular meeting minutes from September 16th and except for the record, the Arts and Humanity Commission minutes from September 10th and steering forum minutes from September 18th as presented.
Second.
Right, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The three minutes are approved. Claims against the city, item D, D1.
Mayor McFarlane, I move to accept and pay the claims dated September 11th through October 1st, 2019, as presented.
Second.
Right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the claims of October, or September 11th through October 1st, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, claims are approved. Meeting agenda approval. Any changes, Laurie?
We have no changes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we do have an option for a executive session if we so choose to use it. If we do, can I then interject the notes before the executive session?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, from a staff's perspective, we had added the executive session specifically if the council wanted to seek any legal advice.
All right, so we may or may not take advantage of it.
And so we may not even enter into an executive session. If we do, we likely will be going in to executive session during the item itself.
Oh, okay.
So the reports will come at the end of the meeting.
Okay, so we'll leave the reports alone then.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Anybody else have any changes or anything to?
No.
Anyone from the audience, no more changes? Okay, seeing none, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded to approve tonight's meeting agenda, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. No special presentations tonight. So the next item is our G consent agenda items. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion, one roll call, vote of the council. Therefore, there will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so request. The item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Does anybody have anything that you want to pull off?
G8.
G8, consider G8 appointment of two members for the 2030 general plan steering forum. Okay. Do we have their names? Because I don't see it on the agenda.
It's in the, yeah, it's in the detail.
Detail, okay, okay.
I move for approval of the consent agenda less G8, which is removed.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cortez?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Proter McBride?
Yes.
Mayor McFarlane?
Yes. Okay, then the next item is G8.
And Mayor, the only reason I pulled that off is I did want to just kind of acknowledge the two people that were added on.
Yeah.
It was kind of a last minute thing, so Pablo Correa is there.
And Brenda Robbins.
And Brenda Robbins, so.
Two good people.
Yeah, good. I just wanted to make sure that I acknowledged them for coming on, so they would stay in for.
Yeah, no, that was just some suggestions that were made and some people didn't agree to be on the, so.
Right.
And so thank you for your help on that, too.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, then I'll entertain a motion to approve G8.
Motion.
I move approval of.
Yeah, because it's approval, it's not.
Move approval.
Go ahead.
Second.
Of the two.
Of Brenda, sorry, of Pablo Correa and Brenda Robbins participating on the.
General Plan Steering.
General Plan Steering Committee.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, don't need a roll call vote on this, do I? So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, congratulations and thank you to Brenda Robbins and Pablo Correa. Correa. Correa, easy for you to say. Okay, item H is our public comments section. I do have one public comment speaker card, but I think I will allow this comments to be made during the topic tonight. Is there anybody else, though, who would like to? Please state your name and your address for the records.
Robert Miller, 128 East Ridge Circle, Casa Grande, Arizona. Mayor, councilmembers, thank you for giving me a few minutes to come and speak to you. Super excited I'm here on behalf of the Nell County Veterans Memorial Foundation.
Yeah.
And so I believe you guys also received the invitation. We're excited to announce that we've been doing ceremonial groundbreaking ceremony on November 11th, Veterans Day this year at 9:00 AM. And so obviously, we'd invite you guys to come and join us. It's an awesome opportunity for us to add an amenity to our community. We will be building a memorial park to remember the 110 people from Nell County that died in action for their country. And so we're excited. You guys have a book that was written by one of our board members with many of the stories that we collect. We continue to try and do research to find more stories for the names that are on that wall, because we like to humanize it. Part of what we're trying to do is remember those heroes from our local communities that we grew up next to, dining in restaurants next to, whose families still reside in our county. And so it's a great opportunity for us to not only remember them, but thank all of our heroes, right, that didn't need to come home. Thank all those that served in the country for our freedoms as we prayed for earlier today. And so we'd obviously invite everybody and everybody from the community to come and join us on November 11th at 9:00 AM.
Veterans Day.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, so thank you, guys.
Very good, thank you, Robert. That's November 11th.
9:00 AM.
9:00 AM. Over at the Edward, at Hooper Park.
Edward Park, in Fort Worth, Alabama.
Okay. All right, anyone else, any other public comments? Okay, hearing none, then I will close the floor and we'll move to our first award of contracts, I1.
Thanks, Mayor. First, we'll say, start off by saying that the police department is very happy with their one police station. But tonight, we're here to talk about in-car cameras.
You need some extra personnel, too.
The Casa Grande Police Department requests authorization from the mayor and council to enter into contracts, issue purchase orders, and install watch guard digital in-car cameras in the amount of $89,105.28 to include the tax. We're asking for an ordinance to allow us to purchase 10 of these in-car camera video systems and one dedicated server to store videos that are created from the cameras. The system provides two cameras per vehicle. The forward-facing camera provides high-definition panoramic view. The rear-facing camera allows an officer to monitor arrestsees during transport back to the station. The system captures up to 60 seconds of pre-event recording prior to being activated. The system also has a manual activation that can be used without emergency equipment being engaged. These systems record in both HD and standard resolution simultaneously. Important incidents are automatically saved in the HD format and routine events are saved in standard resolution. This is determined by the officer when the user tags and categorizes video after each event. How the videos are tagged and categorized determines the amount of time the video is kept, which will help us in our records retention. The system allows for easy redaction and videos can be pulled from the dedicated server by our own police employees. This eliminates the need for IT assistance or hiring a full-time employee to handle redaction and providing copies of requested videos to the public or the courts. Purchasing the dedicated server and storing it at the public safety building, which would be the plan, will greatly decrease the amount of time involved in downloading our videos, because that's been a problem before when we've had, the way our internet operates. Each camera in the server comes with a five-year warranty. The warranty covers repairs, maintenance, and parts for all the purchased equipment. The funding for this request was rolled over from the approved three-year CIP project that began in 2019 but was pushed into this year. And with that, would be glad to answer any questions.
Mayor?
So reading this, going through this, it appears that you've made the decision that we're going to abandon any kind of body worn cameras.
We would gladly get them if you could find the money. This is, this is the most economical way for us to have a recording at all. I wouldn't say we've abandoned it, but I think, and it was in the RCA, I think originally that the, when we looked at body worn cameras, they were not economical for us, for our city, for our finances, and for our department's budget. And we feel that these cameras will provide us some video evidence for prosecution and for helping in the way of complaints and also protecting the officer against false complaints. It's a cheaper, it's a lot cheaper than body cameras. The amount of video that's collected is a lot less than a body camera would collect, admittedly, but for our needs and our finances and the city's finances, we feel like this is the most efficient way to go for our department right now.
Yeah, and are these cameras the same as where they, before they would get in the car and then put them in the car and activate them?
No, they're mounted in the car.
They're, that's what I was seeing, was they're actually mounted in the car.
Yes, yes.
And so all of our vehicles then that probably that answer the most serious of calls and that will have one that's in the car and we're not dependent that the officers pick one up and put it in there?
Well, I'm not sure I follow you, Mary, but it's the, the cameras itself, it's a part of a three-year project.
Okay.
And at the end of, and at the end of this CIP project, we, our hope is that every car in patrol will have one of these cameras in it.
And is it dependent, then, that the officer, when they get in the, it's turned on and then during the stop, once a stop is made?
Once you activate your emergency equipment, it automatically.
Okay.
It automatically engages and it drops back. You can set it for 15 seconds, 30 seconds, 45 seconds, or 60 seconds to record pre-event. That'll help us for when you're following a DUI suspect, for instance.
Okay.
Our plan would be to set it for the maximum of 60 seconds prior to the engage, engagement, but it also has a manual button to when, if our officers roll up on something without their lights on, then they would have to push the manual button to activate their cameras.
Okay.
Lisa.
And I'm going to follow up what Mary initially asked. I, I'm still, I know we've talked about body cams many times, every year during the budget process, and I'm still in, and so my, but I, but I do understand, Chief, how important it is for us to have cameras. I do believe it's best for the officer, I believe it's best for the citizens, the community. So my question is similar to Mary's, you know, if we implement these into the, you know, three, three vehicles, is that what you guys, how many vehicles?
Ten.
Oh, ten, I'm sorry, ten.
Ten initially.
Ten vehicles, how does this affect if we did decide in the future to move forward? I know in the RCA, I just didn't like the, you know, when it said, you know, made purchasing the body worn cameras impossible and impractical. I still don't believe it's impossible or impractical. And I, but I appreciate, because I know we've talked, we've talked budget on this, and so I know you're trying to come up with a solution so we can have some type of cameras, which it is important, but I, you know, the, the cameras that are installed in the vehicles are visual only, there's no audio, and then what, you know, for the officers that are on foot, that are going into buildings, I, I just don't see cities going away from them. I know it, there's been discussions, sorry, I'm going to let you talk.
No, that's all right.
I know there's been discussions, but I see cities like Phoenix increasing, because it, it only helps the officer. It, it seems as though that's what's happening, because I do pay attention, because I know every year we talk about it and every year we say, how are we going to fund this? So, so my question back to you is if we install these in 10 vehicles, are we still able to consider body cameras if we can come up with funding or are you going to just try to just kind of move forward with these and nothing else?
No. You, you ended with one question, but there were several parts of that that I feel like I need to address. We, we are not against body cameras and it's, and it's kind of like when my son wanted a brand new truck and I bought him a 2005 instead, and I told him if he can come up with the money, I'll gladly buy him a new truck. And I feel that's the same way with body cameras. We are not against them. We're, we operate off your direction and off Larry's direction, and if the city would say that that's where they want to go, they want to fund it, then we would start looking at body cameras, too. I, I don't think getting the in-car camera prohibits that at all. It's not necessarily even a stopgap, but for the reasons that we brought up prior to this, on, on the redaction, on the, on the amount of footage, on the cost and everything, this was our most efficient and cost-effective alternative to having nothing.
Right.
Right? Phoenix and larger departments, they have the budget, they have made the commitment, and they pretty much write a blank check. I think nationally, departments our size and cities our size, I think you'll see that there's more and more of them going away from them, because at some point, they just become cumbersome on, on the budget. And when, we're not coming to you asking for more people, but everybody up at that panel knows we need them. And when, when I'm sitting here with eight officers short and we have the same amount of manpower staffing, I should say, that we had 10 years ago, but the city has grown personally, but I'll do whatever council directs, obviously, and Larry directs personally, I'd rather see more boots on the ground, so to speak, and go with, go with the in-car camera, because we get more out of it. They're a benefit to the officer, they make the citizens feel better, there's no doubt about it, but for, for right now, financially and for budgetary reasons for us, and still trying to grow our department a little bit and, or at least keep up with attrition, this is a very viable alternative to body cameras.
Part of it was your wording, because it says impossible and impractical.
Well, that, that was me that wrote that, Mary.
And that's what.
I know, too. I had it highlighted.
That was my words, because at the time, I think when we talked about body cameras, it wasn't possible. And at the time, we talked about body cameras, it wasn't practical. Now, in the future, maybe not, but for the time that we talked about it, because so many people were for it at the council, right? It had to be impossible or impractical, or I'd be wearing one today. We would have wrote the check. And, and we can agree to disagree on that, Mary, but at the time, that's what, that's the situation we're in. A year from now, if the seven of you all want to come back and say, Mark, I want you to get body cameras, we'll dedicate nothing but our time to get body cameras, as long as you write the check.
And I, and that was my point, Chief. I just want to make sure if we're, or cameras for the, for the vehicles, is it, is it a waste of money if in a year, we might, you know, find a way to come up with body cams? But it sounds like you'll, I mean, you can still use them, obviously.
Yeah, well, I mean, there's a lot of departments have both.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'd like to see.
They have both, and I think this is a very good step in the right direction for us, because right now, honestly, we don't have any.
I know, I know.
Well, we have one, it's a loner.
Yeah.
And I think people expect, expect video.
Yeah, exactly.
And we don't have video.
Exactly.
And this is a very good start down the road, and it certainly, and again, I'm going to reiterate this to you, Lisa, this does not mean that we're against them.
Right.
Because we're not. Organizationally, we're not against them, nor does it mean that this is a alternative to, in lieu of.
Okay.
This is just our first step in trying to get something that's a benefit for both the citizens and our officers and for the courts.
Thank you.
Donna?
You know, and I see this as really a big, I understand what you all are going with, but getting back to what we have on the agenda tonight, my question is, when we talk about video storage, is that going to be staff-intensive or is it something that, I mean, will be rolled into somebody's responsibility and/or could it be something that experienced volunteers could help handle to take some of that? Because that's part of the issue when we talk about the video storage and downloading, uploading, whatever.
Right, and in this system, Donna and Angela jump in, because she's, she's been involved in this from day one, but this system allows for our people at our station that's employed by the police department to handle all of that. We don't need IT to pull video for us, we don't need a full-time employee to do any redaction, we can do that all ourselves, and that's one of the, that's one of the things about the watch guard system that attracted us to it. We felt like we could handle everything internally and by, and believe me, we've had lengthy talks with IT, and the fact that we are storing this server in our building, and I don't understand the dynamics of, it bounces from here to downtown, it bounces back and it slows it all up, that's what we're told, that this increases the time to download, or I'm sorry, decreases the download time, and that our people can be trained to pull things and redact things that require nobody else on our building.
And the reason that I ask that is that, you know, it's only as good as, and so the last thing we want to do is if we have storied capability and then all of a sudden video is lost, then that puts us at a whole different level, you know, we don't want to do that. So I, that's why I'm asking if there's going to be, you know, some training or something involved so that there's accountability of what happens to that video.
Your turn, Lisa.
I was just going to say, we have one installed right now in a vehicle and the amount of time it takes to download video footage is probably a tenth of what it was taking before with our old system, and currently, Records is handling all of that. We only have one, but whatever they've got is taking a lot less time. The storage is at our facility, so it's not having to come down the internet, come to IT and be stored here, and then when we want to pull it, it's coming back down that way. It's at the building itself, so we're not hogging up the line or tying up any other space. They are already trained on it, they're already handling what we have, they're working the one camera, so they were sufficiently trained on all of that at that time. As we go in a phase by phase in this, they'll be able to see, you know, how much is going to be done, but we honestly don't get a great deal of requests for car camera footage. Usually, it's from an attorney or the county.
Okay, thank you.
Bob?
Mayor, with what has come up tonight, I can tell you that my history is, I thought the department was headed towards body cams. I've, I've heard the argument that, that the money is just not there for that, but the chief also pointed out that the department's not against body cams. As an officer, I think I would prefer the body cam over the in-car cam, for the reason that a lot of incidents don't happen right in front of the car. They, they happen in the house, down the alley, wherever, and I, I think as an officer, I would feel like I was better protected liability-wise by having that body cam. With what I know tonight, I feel like I'm going to be making an uneducated decision, voting yes or no on this, and I would like to pose the possibility of tabling the item and asking for a study session, a short study session, where the chief and IT can fully explain this to us about why we can and should do one, but not, but, but we can't necessarily do the other. That's just my thoughts. I mean, I'll, I know the majority of the council rules, so.
Yeah, I have a few questions, too. Do they automatically upload or does the officer have to do it? So are we going to ever miss upload and does it upload everything or is it selective? Can the officer erase anything or, you know, or are we sure that our upload's working so we don't miss anything inadvertently? I know that's a lot of questions, but basically, is it automatic?
The officer cannot delete the video footage. The only thing they can do is tag it to whatever the incident is. When they come in contact within a range of our building, it starts automatically uploading.
Automatic, okay.
Yes.
So it's not, you have to remember?
No.
And then?
And we also will have it set up where it will notify their supervisors if they haven't uploaded within 24 hours or 48 hours, when they've been on shift.
And then I see the, you know, the body cam versus car cam, I have concerns about that as well, but I can see that the body worn body cam and you're driving, you're not going to see everything, but the car will allow you to catch the stop, admittedly not the chase down the alley, but, you know, that, that brings me back, because I know these body cam discussions we've had, sounds like we're going to have more, is about the time it takes a person to redact. And we're still going to have that issue with these cameras. Who, I know you said there's someone doing it, but, and we're doing one now, but how much time have we allotted for this person to redact, to go over the video, and who is, is a specially trained person?
We have a couple of people that are trained with the idea from the vendor. The redaction would be if somebody requested it.
Yeah, I realize.
So we're not redacting everything.
Not redacting everything, I realize that, it's only for the request.
But we can do it in-house.
But these are requested a lot less than body cam, is what I heard you say.
But, yeah, but the body camera footage, if I'm in your house for 45 minutes, I got 45 minutes of body cam footage.
And I, and I don't want to.
It has to be stored, right?
I don't want to get lost in the body cam, that really was my question.
But I feel like y'all are bringing it up, so I kind of got to address some of it. I got 45 minutes of body camera storage. Then I have to figure out, go through that, and did I film the juvenile, did I do, whatever, right? So that's, that's where the time comes in for the redaction versus the car. The cars have a panoramic view on them, which gives us a lot to follow, and even though there's a lot of things that happen inside a residence, most of our complaints that we get from the citizens of Casa Grande take place on the street.
Traffic stop.
It's not that I came into your house and I was rude, it was that I was rude on a traffic stop. It was I didn't run that stop sign. I didn't, I wasn't rude to the officer, but the officer was rude to me. Most of our complaints that we get, fortunately, are minor complaints that deal with the traffic stop themselves. Right now, I'll admit, it's not the best way to handle things, but every one of our officers have a recorder, and if they come into your house, trust me, you're probably being taped.
Probably.
Because they're smart enough to take care of themselves in that, in that sense. So we're, we're not talking apples and apples, really.
No, I, I fully, I fully understand. Reason I want to bring it up is so that people know that the redaction and the, the body cameras or the cameras aren't much of the cost.
No, the cameras are like buying a cell phone. The cameras are, the body cameras are just like buying a cell phone. I'll give it to you for a dollar, but by the way.
You have to buy my spare storage.
It's $900 a month for your data.
Yep.
Your upload, and then we own it. We own your data. So if you want to go away from our carrier, then you're going to have to buy your own data from us. Well, we own all this on, on the car camera.
And if we put these in 10 cars, say, how are we going to pick these first ones? Are they the take-home cars or are they the rover cars, the most used cars?
They'd be the most used cars.
Okay, because that's what I would like to, you know, because a take-home car is always going to have a lot less action then.
Yeah, they would be, they would be the hot seat of cars.
And as, as. And I was, I was looking through this, and the yearly license, there's like one for a thousand bucks, and then 150 per camera, does that sound about right? So it's not too terribly expensive in the grand scheme of, of licensing. And uh, is the installation included in this quote? I see all the equipments included for the installation, but is the actual installation included?
The installation will be done in-house.
Okay, so...
It's like a, it's a basically a plug and play.
It's not that big a thing, it's not like you have to hook it into, to the system of the car.
It's not wiring throughout the whole vehicle or anything.
And then, sorry, I had a few questions. And now, so I'm seeing that we've got one system here, the watch, uh, watch guard. Do we look at other sys, and I don't see like a competitive bid sheet or anything like that.
Here, here. Do you have them?
Oh, yeah.
I didn't see those.
That's the best buy, the one we got.
Okay, good. Well, that answers that question then.
Are you done?
Yeah, I had some questions, and I can ask as many as I want. So yes, I am done now.
Mr. Powell?
I just, uh...
Is he done? Were you done, Matt?
Yeah, he's done. I am done.
I, I think the majority of the times, if it's in a patrol car, you're gonna be pulling somebody over, or pulling up behind an accident, or pulling up beside somebody. So you're gonna, focus is probably gonna be where that camera's gonna be most of the time, not always. But the, uh, as they say, if we can't buy enough, if we can't figure a way to make it work where we can cover almost everybody in the department with body cameras, then this is probably the best way to do it that we can afford to do. And uh, I, I didn't get much help with my first purchase on a car either, chief, so my father insisted I contribute to that, so uh, as I say, I, I think this is what we should do now, and, and when the time comes when we can do it right, like you guys would like, I think that'd be the time to change.
I think I'd like to take up on the suggestion of tabling this, because I agree with you, it's not apples to apples. It's apples to oranges, and I want an orange and not an apple at this point, meaning I preferably is the body cams. Uh, again, just for all practical purposes, the way the cars are, and I think some of the more hotspots are taken when you, when you're out, when you're someplace outside of the purview of that camera. But if we're gonna spend money, I'd like to take a look at saying, here's what it's gonna cost. Again, go into, 'cause we've heard different figures as far as storage data and that, but not actual hard figures, and maybe if we took this nine, $89,000, and then, and applied that towards taking a look at body cameras and that, I just would like to table that and to be able to compare the two.
Well, obviously, we'll do whatever council wants. Um, but a reminder, this is a CIP project that was approved by this very council last year for three, for three years. And it was pushed back one year because of technical problems that we were having with the upload and, and some glitches with our work inside the city. Um, but we'll, we'll certainly...
Yeah, chief, I...
Do whatever council directs. But it was a CIP project that was approved in 2019's budget.
My, my two cents on the subject is that, two subjects, body cam and, and the car cam, in-car camera. And I think we should move forward with the in-car camera, because otherwise, we're gonna be sitting here talking about body cams a year from now, and won't have any protection on the vehicles whatsoever. So I think we should move forward with it. There's no need to table it. Um, and to, to the chief's point, it's already been approved in the CIP budget. We, we looked into the body cams, the expense isn't for the cameras, the expenses for the storage, for the redaction, for the management of the storage. It's probably a person and a half, two people, full-time job, just managing that data that's gonna be collected by the body cams. And so with that, um, and that, all that data then also has to be stored in the cloud. We, we won't have the, the facilities to handle it, handle the data, so there's a lot more information needs to be gathered on the body cam side of the equation, you know, for the total cost of the actual project. So I think in the meantime, this is a good project, I think we should move forward with it.
I'd like to move, though, to re-table it.
And that's my, ten cents.
We'll have a second read too, if we can get more information, wouldn't we?
Yeah, but...
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, you have a motion on the table, to table, you have a motion on the floor to table.
I'll second the table.
Okay, it's been moved and segmented. I think I'm gonna ask for a roll call vote on this.
Yeah.
Please.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
No.
Councilmember Cortson?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
No, now's the time to decide.
Mayor Protem McBride?
No.
Mayor McFarland?
No. Okay, so the table failed. Are there any more questions for chief on this particular item?
I have a question. Um, chief, I, and the only reason I said table, again, I, I do believe we need video, I do. I, I'm a huge supporter of it. Um, but I just feel that we have a lot of unanswered questions, and I think just, and so I, that's why when Councilmember Huddleston brought it up, and all the questions, you know, Matt Herman had, and Mary, I think we all had questions, and it's all about being transparent, answering the questions, and making sure that we're, you know, even though it's $90,000, but it's still $90,000. And even though we approved in the CIP, it's not like it's, you know, we have to do it. I mean, it, 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 there's flexibility, isn't there? And then, with the CIP, I guess I should ask that.
Well, absolutely. It's, it's at the pleasure of the mayor and council.
Right, I mean, so we approved it, and we had two council members on the CIP committee that made the decision to move that forward or whatever, but it's still okay, even though it was approved. And so I just, that's the only reason, and I, the only thing I wanted since we are gonna move forward with this, I just wanna make sure, and I guess this is a question also, do we have an updated policy on video cams? You know, Mary asked, when do they turn them on? How is it kept? Is it 25 seconds or 30 seconds? Is there an updated policy that the officers have in hand when they, you know, when these are, are installed?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor, I call for the question.
Mr. Mayor, there's not, there's not been a formal motion on the item at this point.
No, we have to have it read. He caught, he caught the question.
And, and Mr. Mayor, if I can, just very, very quickly, before you read the ordinance, um, just uh, again, a point of clarification for tonight's meeting, there, there's a number of points that have been discussed. Uh, when we did the evaluation on the body cams, we were looking at roughly $600,000 plus a year annually from an operations perspective. And, but what staff can do is bring back to the mayor and council that information. We can distribute it, once again, as we're moving into the budget for your evaluation for, and considerations, as a component of that, of our, of our upcoming budget.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I don't think any of us object at the body cam idea. I just think that this is a separate issue from the body cam.
Don't we have to, don't we have to read the motion now, because...
Yeah. So can I get an ordinance number?
I have one on the floor, and the conservative asked for an ordinance.
Yeah, can I get an ordinance number, please? Gloria?
Ordinance number 3159, an ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, approving a contract with Compute International Inc.
Hey Gloria, I think it's six, ours says 6-0.
3160.
Well, give me a second. Mine says 59.
Yeah, the...
Okay. Let me, let me...
The agenda says 6-0, so I don't know. And yours says 6-0.
Mine says 3160.
Three, I'll start over.
Sorry.
Thank you. Ordinance number 3160, an ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, approving a contract with Compute International Inc. for the purchase and installation of 10 watch guard digital in-car video camera systems and one dedicated server. Expenditure public funding amount not to exceed $89,105.28, and authorizing execution of a contract.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number, it's 3160 now?
Yes.
Or 59?
3160, second.
Okay, it's been moved and segmented, Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Huddleston?
Can I still make a brief statement, even though the question is called? Uh, it may seem counterintuitive that I brought up the tabling idea. Uh, I'm now gonna vote yes for the, for the in-car cams. I'm not against those, I just simply wanted more information, but nonetheless, yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
And I'm gonna reiterate what you said, Councilmember Huddleston. I am not against these at all, just for the record, I just wanna make sure that we still look at body cams and don't, you know, take it off the, you know, table. I just think it's something that's important to constantly, you know, keep ahead of. So yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson?
Again, I will say, um, I like the idea of these new cameras over the old cameras. I think it's a much improvement, uh, where we're not gonna have the incidents where somebody forgot to turn them on or that sort of thing. I think they are needed, and again, I'm with the other members that I would've liked to have seen, uh, a little more information, but I will vote yes.
Councilmember Powell?
I'll just play the old vote yes.
Mayor Protem McBride?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. Okay, item I-2, consider ordinance number 3161.
Thank you. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council authorize the city manager to execute a contract with AJP Electric, Inc. for the base bid price of $299,580, with a 17% contingency for a total authorization for spending of $350,000. Uh, this contract will provide for the construction of a traffic signal at the intersection of Peart Road and McCartney Road. Uh, that intersection is currently a four-way stop, and obviously has major backups during uh, key parts of the, uh, the day and night. Mostly commuter traffic along McCartney Road heading to the east part of the county or out to I-10, and then continuing west, as well as all of the school traffic that we get there. Uh, the installation of the signal will improve the traffic flow. Um, however, there were some questions as part of this RCA, um, that were raised out on social media, and uh, it was because we don't have a dedicated left turn lane at that intersection, will we be stopping that through traffic if one person wants to turn left? So we did do a traffic simulation, and I'm gonna let Dwayne Itell do that real short presentation, just to show you how that intersection will function currently as a four-way stop, and then with the signal, and how that new signal will work.
So we did a, we're doing a simulation, and we talked a little bit about the intersection. The westbound is on one lane, and that's the concern, if somebody went westbound, they have to turn left. And all they have, all we have is a green ball, everybody behind them will back up. Uh, it's not such an issue northbound or eastbound, but there's a few more lanes there. Uh, we looked at about six different ideas in common in the signal timing. One of them was adding a lane on, um, McCartney. That's a, it's not easy to send our streets department out to put some asphalt out there, it's a somewhat expensive thing to do. So we think we can handle it with signal timing. So if you wanna start this, what we had in the first slide is what it looks like with a four-way stop. And what, how we did this is we actually went out, took new traffic cams to make sure we knew, uh, third traffic out there. This is in the after rush hour here. We can see people back up, we've actually seen it all the way back to I-10. So there's something definitely needs to be...
Some of us have been in it.
So we looked at what happened to, all four lanes hit a green ball, so east and west hit a green ball, and no left turn arrow, and north and south hit a green ball. But that worked okay, but we decided we wanted it better than okay. So what we're gonna do is, northbound and southbound will get a green ball and no, no arrow, 'cause it's really not a lot of opposing southbound traffic could cause a problem for northbound to turn left. But east and west, that's a different story. So what we're gonna do is stop eastbound traffic and give westbound traffic a green ball and a left turn arrow. Give them a certain amount of time to clear the intersection, then do the opposite on eastbound. Westbound will stop, eastbound will get a green ball and a green arrow. And as you can see in the simulation, it, this act, same traffic that you saw in the first one was all backed up. This is, this is how it will work.
Can you do it again?
It's ingenious.
It doesn't preclude us in the future, if suddenly the traffic gets such that that doesn't work, we could put an extra lane in the future CIP and build that.
What would the cost of that, a single lane out there?
$250,000. And that's like, we thought, why spend $250,000 where this will work?
Probably there was drainage in there too, isn't it?
Right, that's the...
That's a difficult corner.
Can we do the whole intersection, we got estimates some years ago, $3 million. I figured it would be four or five now. We're hoping to develop for down there and also for that.
When they develop these corners?
So you're saying north and south?
You're talking about the radio?
So north and south won't have a, um, a turn signal? It'll just have the green ball?
Right, but if that doesn't work, there's no problem, that's going out there again, and a left turn arrow.
Is, does that happen anywhere else where, I just, it seems like it would be a little confusing for people if they see that there's green arrows going the other way and there's not in the, in this direction? Does that happen very oft?
Yes.
It does? Okay.
We've got, we've got quite a few signals that have a dedicated turning movement for one direction, and the other three directions do not have.
Okay, so that's, that is common. I didn't, I guess I just never paid attention to it.
The county uses a lot too, like, out, out towards Florence, those, when you're heading up to, to, yeah, anyway.
Okay.
They're out there on the... Please drive with respect.
Got it, got it, okay.
So the other thing about this traffic signal, because this is an interim signal for this intersection, there's a lot of work that needs to happen before this intersection is at full buildout, and we can deal with the drainage, we can deal with all the lanes that are gonna be needed in the future, and accommodate the development around all four of those corners. Um, this will be one of our most high-tech signals in town. This is one that we'll have real-time control over, we'll be able to watch it from the North Operations Center, or a laptop if we get that access through IT, and we'll be able to respond to situations. Um, so this'll be kind of our prototype for the future signals in Casa Grande. Even though it's gonna be a span wire signal, it'll be more powerful and more manipulated, manipulatable than any other signal in town.
Just as we can go in, I'm going on my computer in my office to see our video, change the signal timing.
Okay.
So like if there's a, an accident on the 10, and they're routing people McCartney, you can say, oh, we need to really ramp it up at 10 o'clock in the morning when we would normally need it, right? Or...
Yeah, so I'm sure you've all been to sporting events or other large gatherings where you'll see our police officers are out there at some of our cabinets with the hand controls. This gives us the ability to control that signal off-site, so either at the knock or from a laptop, if we get an emergency call in the middle of the night, and all the traffic from I-10 southbound is now going down Peart, we can now manage that, that movement.
And, and the other thing is, so the first simulation you had where it was way backed up, and this simulation are scientifically accurate.
There's the period of time, it's the same traffic, it's just how that intersection will function, and it's, I think, at a level B.
Sure, yeah, east and west would be a few towards down the C, but it all has it at more than adequate levels. We designed a D P, so we're, we're way better than that.
Thank you.
So I think having special events and things out at the school and at the park, I think that that will take care of it. As someone that travels us every day and, and in that long line, I think that, you know, this is a great, great way to, to not spend a whole lot of money trying to figure out and do all the stuff in that intersection, but at least alleviate some of the frustration, because I know people are frustrated... because I know people are frustrated at multiple times. So, if there are certain times that are like the morning, as you mentioned, and people coming home from work, those times will be carefully allotted when you, when you're setting this up, correct?
Yeah, this simulation is the worst time of day for that.
And like with all of our signals, we have the ability to program them for a period of time to meet the needs of that specific intersection. So, we can go in and do a, you know, school time program and then a late-night program or a middle-of-the-day program, so we do have that capability.
And I think that, I'm sorry, and I think that it's to let the community know how this is gonna work and to do some public education, so they understand why it may appear to be temporary, that we're trying to fix that problem.
If we do our jobs correctly, they'll never even ask that question.
Dwayne, you said earlier, if you were to take this interchange, this intersection, and make it perfect, what would the total price tag be?
Fifty seven, we're giving four or five million dollars.
So, four and five million dollars, so we can get a temporary fix for 350,000?
Yeah, or, yeah, for three or five for the signal.
And this is equipment we can use if we wanna now go spend that three million more dollars to fix the interchange?
Right, as much as possible, we're putting the controller cabinet area where it would be at the full buildout of the intersection.
Okay.
And at that time, we can take this band wire signal and maybe we can have somewhere else in the city and just put it there, so the whole signal's not gonna be a throwaway.
Okay. All right, just don't wanna waste 350,000, so. Anybody else have any questions?
If I could just real quick, a quick finish for the record. We did bid this out, and we did have three bids, and AJP was, Electric was the lowest bidder, so just wanted to get that on the record.
Okay, thanks, Kevin. John, did you have a comment? You did ask to speak on this subject, so I'll, I'll allow you to speak.
Thank you very much, Mayor, I appreciate the indulgence. Good evening, Mayor. I do appreciate a couple of things here. First of all, I appreciate the fact that staff actually reached out to me privately in an email with the various options that were initially being considered for this, looking for feedback, and that was very well taken not only by myself, but by the people who are on social media that participated in this process. And they made some changes as a result of that feedback, and that's, that's very impressive to me and to the people that I communicate with so much. Initially, this option wasn't one that was presented to me. The original option for the east-west version was left turns permitted. So, the idea would be that at some point in the cycle, both east and west would be going with the left arrows, and so people could, in theory, turn in front of each other, A, which could be problematic, and B, we still have the problem if somebody's coming eastbound, somebody wants to turn left, southbound, we have a backup. So, this is a different final solution than was originally presented, so I appreciate that. Even with that, I will tell you that there's a significant people, according to people that I've been competing with, that said, let's find the $200,000 for a left turn lane. I know we can't really do that. I know that's not optimal tonight. I think this is a reasonable solution, especially with the technology information that Mr. Louis Davis tonight, that puts a little bit different spin on things, a little bit, but, the idea wasn't to go spend another three million dollars, but they said, the, the people that I spoke with a lot, and it was like 120 to 12, that they will, even with the fact that it would cost an extra 200 and something thousand dollars, they wanted a left turn. So, that's, you know, a pretty big difference in viewpoint. But, Mr. Itell did tell me that if we put the 250,000 out of the left turn lane, and then someday we use 10, 3 million or 5 million or whatever it is at the time, that 250,000 is lost. It's a waste. So, I understand all the budgetary issues. I'm not a UBS, I'm not a novice for this, but I wanted you to understand that the public thinks this is a huge issue. This, this intersection is a bear in their lives, and they want this.
And we agree.
And if this really is gonna fix it, they'll be fine, as Mr. Lewis says. Hopefully, we'll never hear anything about it again, but they were willing to spend the money, have you try and find the money somewhere to, to fix this, fix it more than not now, knowing that it's gonna be five to 10 years before anything significant happens at this intersection. So, I'm glad staff took our viewpoints into consideration. Hopefully, this compromise solution will work, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, John.
So, would this be my opportunity to talk about a geo bond for some, I feel left out, so.
Is this a comment? Can we put this simulation on the website after we go through this?
Yeah, of course.
So, people can do that?
That's our plan, yeah.
And what's the timeframe? If it's approved?
After school's out.
Yeah.
Obviously, we need to go through second reading, and then we have a period, period, and then we'll have our pre-construction meeting, and then after that, we'll give our notice to proceed, and I'm not sure what the instruction, like the time is.
Well, the real issue right now, it takes four to six months to get the poll for once, so we do it next week, maybe as well as we're ready. So, it's probably six months from start.
So, yeah, end of the school year.
You're right, Mayor.
You're pretty close.
Go as fast as we can.
Okay.
I'd wanna say three months.
Anything dealing with ADA and, and your department always takes a long time. I say that affectionately.
Not their department, ADA.
It was. ADA, nevermind. Anybody else have any other questions or comments? Okay. All right, thank you both. Gloria, I'll consider ordinance number three one six one, please.
Ordinance number three one six one, an ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a bid from AJP Electric, Inc., for the construction of a new traffic control signal at the intersection of Peert Road and McCartney Road, authorizing expenditure of public funds not to exceed $350,000, and authorizing the execution of a contract with AJP Electric, Inc.
Mayor McFarland, I move for the adoption of ordinance number three one six one as presented.
Second?
Sorry.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Can I get a roll call vote, please, Gloria?
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Porte McBride.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, so we'll move to the next item on our agenda. Item K, consider resolution number five two zero three. This is a affirming support of the passage of America's Transportation Infrastructure Act. This was supported by all the league of cities and towns, and I don't know if anybody from S C M P O is here or not to speak to it.
I'm represented.
Oh, that's right. Dwayne, Dwayne's part of S C M P O, as am I, as a board member. So, this is the national, you wanna speak a little bit about it, Dwayne? Just give council. Oh, yeah?
I think you're doing a fine job, Mayor. If you'd like to continue, but, yeah, so this is a request from the Suncorder MPO. As, as everybody probably knows, the, the current safety, or current surface transportation spending is the FAST Act, and that is set to expire September 30th, 2020. So, the Arizona Department of Transportation's Long Range Transit Place, Transportation Plan has identified a 300 million, excuse me, billion-dollar gap in funding for transportation improvements in Arizona over the next 25 years, so.
That's just maintenance, too.
The support of the, the new America's Transportation Infrastructure Act would help, hopefully, push some of those funds our way to take care of some of those problems. So, we're just looking for a, a, a passage of this request by city council.
Yeah, there is an actual resolution that, that is drawn up. Did everybody get a chance to look at it? Does anybody have any questions about it, or? Matt, Bob? Okay.
You want us to?
No. No, I'm good. Then I'll, Gloria, then I'll consider resolution number fifty two oh three, please.
Resolution number five two zero three, a resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, affirming support for, affirming support for and passage of American's Transportation Infrastration, Infrastructure Act of 2019.
Mayor McFarland, I move for approval of resolution number five two zero three.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Porte McBride.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. Thank you, Kevin. The next item is item K two, this is a resolution number three four nine zero point four.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff is asking the mayor and council to consider the third amendment to the Vilago pre-annexation and development agreement. And for those of you that have been around since 2003, and there's a couple of you, you know that Vilago was formerly known as the Ranch of the Seo Development Agreement. It's, it's how it was actually adopted in 2003. And for the community and those watching on TV, I thought I'd give a bit of a, of a background, because with it being the third development amendment, I thought I would give some, a brief history and then ultimately go into the specifics of the, of the amendments that are being proposed this evening. So, in 2003, the city of Casa Grande entered into a pre-annexation development agreement with the prior developer, Diamond Ventures, for the purpose of establishing entitlement and development plans for the Vilago developments, formerly known as Ranch of the Seo. The overall vision of the development adjacent public infrastructure and community amenities were included to precipitate growth in the northern region of the city. And, and obviously, we can see through phase one of the development that it brought a tremendous amount of excitement and expansion to this region, to this region. Unfortunately, during the downturn of the housing market and the subsequent recession, we saw the development essentially come to a halt in the Vilago development. In 2012, Community Southwest purchased the development along with several of the vacant lots and the various phased parcels that were available. Since that period, Community Southwest has worked with the city of Casa Grande to make modifications to the planned area development, the P A D, and the public infrastructure plans that would include both, with, with, which would benefit both the development and the city alike. This included a P A D amendment in 2017, something that the mayor and council just recently adopted in 2017. This P A D amendment conformed with the new, with the city master plan and the general plan, and provided modified uses and plans to accommodate current and projected, projected market demands for the undeveloped portion of the project. It also aligned roadway infrastructure that would not only serve the development, but the city's transportation vision as well, and reignite the housing starts for the vacant lots in phase one. Related to the amendments that staff is asking the mayor and council to consider tonight, really, they're somewhat minor in nature. The, the current development agreement does not reflect the updated entitlements and circulation plans that have been amended with the P A D in 2017 that the mayor and council adopted. As the developer works with the home builders to develop Phase Two A, it's becoming increasingly important to consider this amendment prior to the development activities or to the expiration of the current term of the agreement, which is one of the changes that we're considering this evening. The current, the existing development agreement was passed with a 20-year term, and the amendments are asking the council to consider an extension by seven years to that term. In essence, these, the additional term of the agreement would address the discrepancies between the entitlements, and additionally, this proposed amendment outlines specific dollar figures, oh, excuse me, additionally, the, the proposed amendment outlines specific dollar figures related to the initial construction of Vilago Community Park. It's one of the amenities that was built by previous developers. In the existing development agreement, there was a provision that ultimately put the onus on the developer to build that park, so all the infrastructures that, that is there at the community park is actually being reimbursed through development impact fees that, that are collected not only in the Vilago subdivision, but in adjacent subdivisions, and so there's, in essence, the city is repaying through the use of development impact fee credits the, the costs of the infrastructure for that particular park. It also provides a process for the city to obtain an additional 14 acres for the expansion of Vilago Park. This, this was really in my mind, there, there's always been a provision in the existing agreement for the additional park, but this particular provision has been better worded to essentially ensure that the city would, would, and, and a process for the city to ultimately receive the additional 14 acres for the expansion of Vilago Park, and that would need to happen in advance of phase four final plat of the development. And, and again, the, I will, I would say to the council and to the community, there's no specific timeframe as to when we would be asking for that, that additional park land. We essentially are giving ourselves this provision to ultimately request it if there's a need for us to expand the existing park, but no timeframe outlined today. The amendment also, I, I will add, I know the mayor and council has seen some numbers in the existing document in the, in the proposed amendment regarding the actual quantification, if you will, of the actual cost for the park, which was in the $3 million price range, and then it ultimately outlined what we had paid back to the developer through a date specific. That number will likely be updated, but it's going to be very similar to the $189,000, I believe it was, that, that you see in the existing document. We.
It's like 300.
Oh, is it?
It's, it's updated.
Okay, so Brett, so Brett has updated that. Thank you, Brett. So, ultimately, that number will be finalized based on the most recent payments that we've made to the developer to ensure that we add some accuracy to that figure. One of the most important elements that the, that the amendment actually contemplated and that staff and the developer worked on was the realignment of Trekkle Road. If the mayor and council recalls when this original P A D was, was platted, Trekkle from McCartney would actually curve and, and connect to Penalt. And, and so, through the discussions that we've had for the last number of years, the developer has agreed to align Trekkle, so essentially, it'll run due north and south and will eventually connect to Val Vista, which was, which was one of the important provisions that we thought was necessary as part of this amendment. And as I said a minute ago, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, the amendment did contemplate an extension of the development agreement to 2030, and in my RCA, and I know that some of you have received documentation from, from Community Southwest as well, I think we both agree that we believe that, that this provides the continued applicability of the entitlements and really aligns and allows the developer the additional seven years that was somewhat dropped during the downturn. And so, this essentially will, will allow them to continue to progress with their development of, of the, of, and, and build out of that particular development, one that we think is a premier development for our community. And so, with that, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I would entertain any specific questions, and as I pointed out during the passage of the agenda, there is a, an executive session should you need to seek legal advice or legal counsel from Mr. Wallace, there is an executive session that we would, we would link to this particular item, and we could enter into an executive session if warranted.
Larry, can you put, can you put that map up?
It was in our presentation.
It's in the, it's in the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure that we made a PDF.
It's in, it's in there.
It's in our, it's in our council.
I understand, but this, but the computer that we actually show our PowerPoints isn't connected to the, to the internet.
Had a beautiful picture of Trekkle Road here.
I know.
Is there a specific question, Mr. Mayor, that we might be able to ask, or?
No, I mean, a picture in my mind's worth a thousand words a lot of times. It shows the new park that they're proposing, which, and I had conversation with Community Southwest, and their intentions are to try and put a swimming pool facility in there, which was a long-time conversation with some of the original buyers. So, they're trying to make good on some of that.
Everything that's east of Trekkle is low dibs. Everything that's east of Trekkle is low dibs residential, which is another plat.
And, and Mr. Mayor, if, for the, for the benefit of those individuals that may be looking, watching online, they can actually access this through our, through our council packet.
Yeah, it was in our packet. He's in our council packet, so. Okay. Well, anybody have any questions for Larry? Okay.
Does this, have we talked about the extension and time yet, or?
Well, that's, that's what we're talking about right now.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. All right, then, Mayor. I do have a question.
Oh, go ahead, ma'am.
I'm gonna start off with, I don't know what I'm talking about, but I'm hoping you do. In Vilago, there's some additional capital improvement fee that goes along with the purchase of property there?
He's talking about that property tax, that CFD.
Oh, the CFD.
Oh, okay. Does this affect that in any way?
It does not.
Okay.
The, the discussion that we, that we had on the CFD is actually a topic that we would bring back to the mayor and council agreement.
Okay.
And we would have a study session in advance.
Great, thank you.
The, the amendments are essentially what was outlined tonight.
Okay. Any other questions then? All right, then I'll entertain, considering resolution number, please, Gloria.
Resolution number three four nine zero point four. A resolution of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, approving the third amendment to the pre-annexation and development agreement for Vilago Master Plan Community, formerly known as Rancho Paseo, and authorizing execution by the city manager.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of resolution number three four nine zero point four as presented. Second?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
They've been a very good neighbor. We need to treat them as one, yes.
Mayor Protan McBride?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, so-
You've gone through the whole meeting, having to sit there.
All right, K three, consider authorizing and the call of election for the city's 2020 primary and general elections.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, staff is recommending that mayor and council authorize the city's 2020 primary and general elections. I know it seems like we just held it yesterday, but we are starting up again. And the city's primary election is scheduled for August 4th, 2020. This election will be held for the purpose of nominating candidates for the mayor position and three council seats. The mayor, Mayor McFarland is eligible to seek election for this position. The mayoral seat does have a term limit of four two-year terms for a total of eight consecutive years. We do have three council member seats that will be available. Council members up for reelection include Mary Cortson, Lisa Fitzgibbons, and Donna McBride. They are all eligible for reelection. Our council member seats are unlimited terms. In our primary election, if any of the candidates receive and the majority of the votes cast, they will be declared elected at the primary election. In our general election, we will also have the, the general election in November, we will also have the election, which will include the 2030 general plan. We plan, City Clerk's Department plans to hold a presentation on the nomination process. And this will be held here in the council chambers on October 24th, 2019 at 6:00 PM. At this time, we will make available our nomination packets. We are, we'll also have our nomination packet on this date and thereafter available electronically. All of the entire election information, nomination forms are available electronically. I do have to say that two years ago, we did place it also on our website electronically and that I know of. We didn't have anybody download the forms, but I do think that there is a lot of people who go onto our website to seek information, at least review what is required. But a lot of, a lot of candidates still prefer to come to our overview presentation and to come in, and we give them the hard copies. But it is available for those who would like to review the process and even download the forms.
Gloria, I have two questions. One, the general plan election, is that going to be in August or in November?
November. It is scheduled for November.
Okay.
Okay.
So that'll be November, and then the primary is August 4th?
Yes. Yes, that is correct.
And that's if you get 50% plus one, right? 50% of those voted.
It is 50% of the votes. The, the-
Divided by three.
Yeah, the determination is you take the total of the votes cast. For example, we have three council seats, so we take the total of the votes cast for all the candidates. You divide it by the number of seats available, which is three. Then you take that amount and you divide it by two or 50%. And that determines the majority of the votes cast.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation. Anybody else have any questions?
I just wanted, yeah, I just wanted to just add that any council, any candidate wishing to seek the mayoral seat or council member seat, it does require at least 313 signatures on the nomination petitions and not more than 625 signatures. A new election process for this election requires any candidate to file a statement of interest prior to circulating petitions. Now, this is new. It was not required during our last election. So it's very important that anybody who downloads the forms, they will be, that statement will be also included in our electronic process. But it is important that any candidate who wishes to circulate petitions must file a statement of interest form first. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion to approve, authorizing the call of the election for the city of Casa Grande's 2020 primary and general elections.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Okay. You're gonna go forth, Gloria. All right, since we didn't have executive session, we'll skip that. And we'll go right to reports. And I'm gonna start with you, Donna.
Okay, well, since our last meeting, I've been to nine states in less than 10 days. So I'm trying to get my bearings. A couple things. Hats off, Anti-Crime Night was phenomenal. We had Oktoberfest downtown this weekend, the trick-or-treat trot. I was amazed at how many people, talking to some of the, the folks that had booze, they expected a couple hundred people and, and the estimate was well over a thousand. I attended the open house at Fire Station 504 this weekend. They did a great job and there were some happy families leaving. And then I just wanted to mention, I, I don't see her here tonight, but Selena Morris, as we all know, is leaving the city. And I just wanted to acknowledge my appreciation. I have learned a lot from her about the CIP process and understanding our budgets and her expertise has been appreciated. That's all.
Mr. Craig? Mr. Powell?
I was, start off with water. You and I and Larry went up to the groundwater situation for Penal County in September. And the, it, it is actually a congressional committee that's put together, and David Cook was the chairman of it. And the Department of Water Resources head guy was sitting in front of him and was unhappy through most of it. And then there was, there were several other people that were there, but there was a lot of people in the audience. And they went through basically what our groundwater situation is and what the questions are and some of the things that maybe haven't been fulfilled as far as pumps and other things that, that they've looked at. They have one, if I'm not wrong, they're gonna have one in October, right?
No, this Friday, yeah, this Friday.
Yeah, this Friday.
At 1:30.
At 1:30. And anybody that would like to, to kind of catch up on what's going on. The one thing that the, that's kind of problematic, the, the Department of Water Resources chief really seemed, really unfamiliar with Penal County and didn't seem to understand it and said there would be no more farming here in 10 years. Farming's gonna all be gone. And, which would be, probably take about 40% of our, of our economy with it because it's $2.3 million in receipts right now here in Penal County each year. And I would compliment David. He, he sat right behind him and he spurred him every time. He wanted to get more information from him. But as I say, I would certainly recommend this to anybody that, that has free time. That it's, we don't have enough water. It's, it's, it's a real problem legally. They took some questions, and one of the questions I asked was the, basically, when people get their final plat and they get their water augmentation, but they don't use it. And you've tied up all of that in, in the, in the offer. It's been obligated. You can't use that water for somebody new that wants to come or whatever. So the one thing that he did talk about was maybe doing a sunset on the ADWR van or doing something to say, you've got, you gotta play or, or lose. And I don't know what the time period to be, but whether it's 10, 15 years or whatever. But we've got so much of that kind of property laying around in Penal County right now that's obligated in the offer. And so we can't bring in some of the new ones that need to be able to find water. The governor, or the mayor, I promoted you. The mayor's been really stepped out on this, helping. So the other thing, I had a, I had a report from some seniors, Steve, that the, they would like to be able, they said in the past, they could, the senior center would get buses or vans and they could go to baseball games or that kind of thing. And I know you had everything clammed in there for a while, but they, they'd indicated they would really like it if, if you, that could happen again. And I don't know how we're gonna afford two new police stations, but I guess we'll just have to do the best we can. And was it 100 officers or 50? But he's looking at the future.
Yeah, there we go.
So anyway, that concludes mine.
Okay, Matt?
Okay, I got a few things. My wife was helping at the Boys and Girls Club with the piñatas and all the kids came, many kids came up to her and said, hey, have you been to the new splash pad at the new park yet? And she was, she was excited that the kids knew about it. And they were just so excited to tell her about it. So that's, that's great. And on next week, on October 16th, the big boy locomotive is coming through town from the Union Pacific and it's gonna stay here overnight. It's like one of the only places. So it'll be downtown on Main Avenue area. Can't miss it.
They're not putting any public showing for some reason.
Here they are, right? Yeah, you just can't get close to it. Take pictures. Look at it, but can't touch it.
Well, it ran down the track on, between, past our shore and in that area, and people were watching it. But it, like you say, it's really neat to watch that old steam thing go down the track, huh?
And then, oh, the planning, planning department and Larry, I've seen the inside, inner workings of helping a small business through some challenges. And I want to let them know I appreciate it. And for everyone in the city, we do really care and we do really fight to get these little things passed. Or, we're still working on it, but just wanted to let you know. No specifics there, Brett, just, just generalizations. And I, I got the opportunity to be a little fender bender the other day, not my fault, but the police and fire responded very nicely and took very good care of everyone involved. So thank you.
Did they take pictures?
No, I did. And so that was a bad, good experience. But I appreciate what they all did. And then November 2nd is the day of shredding, and we realize it's also a veteran's parade, so you can do both. There's plenty of time. That was the day we could get the trucks to come and everything, but it'll, it'll work out beautifully. And we'll have e-cycle and everything. And I'll be at the location on Penal, 1001 North Penal at the Credit Union. Yesterday, we had the Rotary Raffle at, and it was at the rec center in the community room. And everybody said it was awesome. We had food there, we had entertainment, we had music, football games playing. And so the new community center is really great for, for activities like that. So thanks, Steve and your crew. They did a great job. And last but not least, I got to represent the city at the GPEC Greater Phoenix Fest, which was a great opportunity. I appreciate the opportunity to be there. And they know how to throw a party. It wasn't a rubber chicken dinner by any means. So it was a lot of fun, dance floor DJ, hors d'oeuvres. And we were recognized as a city for our contribution. And we were up there, I was standing next to the mayor of Phoenix, Kate Gallego. And no one else from Penal County that I saw was up on the, we were up on a elevated balcony thing. So I was very proud to be there. And then I met Chris Camacho, who is the director of GPEC. And I was the last one in line for some reason. Erica and I, and so, you know, they're taking pictures. So we get in the picture. And I said, you know, I was, I was hesitant to get involved with GPEC many years ago, I said, but it's one of the best things we ever have done. And I'm proud that we did it. And you guys have helped a lot. I said, you know, I'm from Casa Grande. And he goes, oh, Nikolai. No, that's Coolidge. We're lucid in Casa Grande. So anyway, I, I set the record straight of who we were and what we were doing and how much I enjoyed it. But it was, it was a fun time and it was, it was great. And so thank you. And that's a, it really is a good organization. And there's a video that they showed set to music. And we were in, our sports fields were in the video. Didn't say Cas, it didn't say anyone else's either, but I knew where it was. It was awesome.
And we were on the map.
Yes, we were, we were on the map.
I did get some information on that picture that was taken. So many people looked at that and said, who's that guy on the right? And he said, I don't know, but the one on the left's Matt Herman.
Yeah. Thanks. And my wife. He goes, you want your wife to be in here? I go, yes, of course. So, yes. But it was a great time. Thank you. Mayor?
Okay, so I attended the reopening park with all of its improvements. And I think it really addresses a wide variety of our city between the baseball and the, and the play fields and the, yeah, the improvements to the swimming pool and all of that. But my two favorites are the splash pad and the cooter sign. The cooter sign looks amazing. So it's really, that is really, as many might be aware, that we have the new app called See Click Fix. And so I get my little reports on that. I've had several people tell me about issues in their neighborhood and such as trailers on the street, trash, sofas next to their curb and that. And so I've told them about the app. And I actually had a couple of people call me and thank me for giving them that because it got taken care of. And I want to express my appreciation to Kevin and the Streets Department for acting as quickly as you do. And also with code enforcement with Paul Teis, that, that it seems like, that within no time at all that these things are being addressed. And it's very appreciated by everybody. I've received an invitation from Waste Management Sustainability Forum for January. So I intend to go and hope to see if we can find something new and for markets, mainly looking for paper, cardboard, and clean, just plastic bottles. And that I feel, I've bought two or three items of clothing that are made totally from plastic bottles. And so there's gotta be a market. We're not looking to just, you know, throw it all into a bin and ship it over across overseas just to be recycled later there. So I've, I'm still looking at markets on that. And finally, I was asked to serve on the advisory committee for the Casa Grande Union High School District Career and Technical Education Programs. And we're having a meeting on Thursday, meeting with John Morris. His, his created a curriculum, a future curriculum for next year for engineering for, from, for the- for next year for engineering, for, from, for the freshmen through senior, and it also includes classes for, through Central Arizona College, and it's engineering to go to four-year schools, engineering to go to local training, and it'll entice, so I'm excited about doing that, so, that's it.
Bob?
Yeah, like Donna, I was out of town on vacation for a couple of weeks, came back totally exhausted, and, but did manage to get up and go to the FFA Steak Fry, had a wonderful steak and meal, and Friday, went to the Oktoberfest downtown and had a, had a nice bratwurst with sauerkraut on it. My wife pointed out that all the events I made it to involved food, so. I'm glad to be back.
The advisory board, so.
Thank you, Bob.
First, I just, you know, Steve Hardisty, I just, that Carmick Knapp Park, you know, I live near there, and so I've been spending a lot of time there, and, you know, this project started a long time ago, and we, you know, I, I wanna just thank the citizens that participate in our focus groups, you know, we try to get a lot of input, it came to us, we made them go back and, you know, redesign and work through some things, and, and Steve, you know, you came in, you know, when this was already, I don't know how many years into it, you know, so, and, and I just feel that you've done such a fantastic job, you and your staff, and I just love going by there, I, I spend time, I walk my dogs, I was at the trick-or-trot, I probably, I was there before you guys got there, I got there right at 5:00, and if anyone was there right at 5:00, I was the one with the loose husky that was running around the whole park, and so it was crazy, but we, we caught him, and I just thought I was gonna go through casual stroll, but he got off Dennis, is, you know, he's let it go, but, but anyway, so I do, I'll blame Dennis, but I did, I had a loose husky, and I was so nervous because there were so many people, it was so big, and I think he just saw all that grass and somehow got loose, but, but, you know, I, I, I just love it. I, I literally, it, it just makes me happy to see families there, like I said, I'm there, you know, walking, you know, every other night, and it, it, it's free, you see people having picnics on, in all the Ramadas, the splash pad, there's about 200 people on that little, you know, merry-go-round thing, I always get nervous that someone's gonna fall, but, but it's just, like you said, Mary, I mean, it's just, you know, all the different elements, but there was so much planning that went into it, and you executed against it, and, and were always positive, and, you know, and I know there were so many people involved, but this was something, and when, when I talked to people there, and of course I was like, oh my God, don't you just love it, they don't know who I am, and, you know, but I had to remind them that it took like forever to get here, but, but so pleased with it, and I just wanted to, um...
There was good reasons for that.
Yeah, no, literally, and because it is such a beautiful park, and I, and Sunday, people are proud, you know, they're proud, and, you know, people are picking up trash because they see people that are just dumping it, and that's frustrating. Sunday, I was there, and one of the park's guy, Henry, was his last name, is it John or Steve, or I can't remember his first name, but he got called out on a Sunday because the bathrooms, I guess, were dirty. I don't know why he got called out, but he was there Sunday with his nephew, cleaning up the bathroom, so anyways, I, I hate to go on and on, but it, it, it's just a, a great part of our community, and I'm, you know, I'm just so proud that all that time and energy, you know, it, you, you just see how much people are enjoying it, so thank you for that.
Lisa, was your dog a husky?
The husky.
That's the one that bit me.
Hey, I know an attorney for that.
I know, it, it was crazy, uh, but like, you know, and again, this time of year, there's so much going on, you know, the Anti-Crime Night, it's so great seeing families there, enjoying the, the nice weather in the evenings, Oktoberfest, that, that, you know, was fun, you know, of course, you know, it, it, yeah, well, it'll, it'll be interesting to see next year how it grows, the trick-or-treat chop, you know, I got through it with my loose dog, and, you know, this, this census, again, the mayor and I are on the committee, and you're gonna hear it every month from us, it's such a, a critical part of, you know, of how we get funding, so, you know, but I, I'm very impressed with the committee we have, we have a lot of stakeholders from agencies that are gonna play a critical part, you know, education is gonna be critical to get those parents to do the surveys, the healthcare systems, we have someone from Sun Life, you know, we have people from the Latino community to help with, you know, going out to Spanish-speaking people, so we have a lot going on, we're putting together action plans and calendar of events. March 12th is the date that it goes live on the website, so you're gonna hear the mayor and I talk about it every month because it, it's just so important, you know, but again, there's, there's so many exciting things, you know, all the, um, the cultural things too, you know, the September 16th is obviously a big deal for the Hispanic community, and there was a lot of activities, and you weren't here, I don't think at the last meeting, but I did thank you, but you weren't here, for everything that the Humanities Commission has done, for that, that, you know, with, you know, the Caesar Travis, the mariachi concert at Eva's, the, the concert, what you guys did at the Boys and Girls Club, so I really wanna thank the Arts and Humanities Commission with all the other agencies, because I, I think that adds so much value to our community, you know, having diverse events throughout the, throughout the community, so thank you for all, everything you've done, so, sorry, I know I've gone out forever.
It's all good.
Just to piggyback on the census thing, it's worth about $3,000 for every man, woman, and child, which is counted in that, in that census, so it's extremely important of Casa Grande, so that's kind of why the emphasis is so, is so important on this 2020 census. Just to remind the council, there is a chamber breakfast with the council tomorrow morning at, uh, at 7:30.
Are you sure?
That's why you guys never show up, because you never have a...
I was there, but I didn't get anything. I was there last night.
Friday morning.
It's Friday morning?
It said before breakfast.
Oh, okay.
It's, I've got it on Tuesday.
Tomorrow, Tuesday.
It's always Tuesday.
It's always Tuesday.
I didn't, I don't...
I didn't get anything.
All right, well, then I won't see you tomorrow. There's also, the kickoff was today for the World Cup Skydiving Competitions out at, uh, out in Eloy, so if you get a chance, it goes all week, it's worth going out to see, if you haven't seen it, it's, it's really quite a sight. We have a couple of ground breakings this week, there's the Wellness Center on Rodeo Road, and there's also, that's on Thursday at 10:30, if you're, if you wanna come out and kind of greet a new business, and then there's also a grand reopening of the Thirsty Donkey on Friday at 4:30.
Again?
This is new owners.
Oh.
So they're doing a grand reopening, and then the hospitals golf tournament is this Friday also, at, out at Occhin, Southern Dunes, it's 9, 9 o'clock shotgun. So, and then Mr. Powell mentioned it, but there's a Pinal Water State Legislative Hearing that will be here in this chamber at 1:30 also on Friday. So just a couple of highlights. And I wanted to make a mention too on, on Carmick Knapp Park, it's an amazing facility which the city and, and, and everyone in the city spent a lot of money on this, and I know Steve Hardisty's staff spent a lot of time, as did Hayden, and it's a little disappointing and, and that, that people don't take care of the park, and so I'm asking the citizens to keep your eyes open and keep an eye out for people who are damaging things, because we've already had damage at the new park. We've lost all of our garbage cans, they've been stolen. They took down the, the netting off of the basketball hoops, just dumb stuff, so, and I don't mean that to make it sound like a bummer, but, but I want everybody to be aware, and just keep your eyes open, because we need to protect our stuff, right? And we need to protect the things that, that we all cherish, even though someone else may not, so, so I'm just, just asking for, you know, a little vigilance there. We're also working, and Larry and I had a meeting last week with the, the chief Pinal Group and Pinal Alliance for Economic Growth on third grade reading initiative, and I mentioned this before, but we're looking for, and hopefully the council will approve, no, I'm not supposed to go there. Anyway, I'm getting, I'm getting the desk there. Anyway, we're gonna be, we're gonna be hopefully moving this initiative forward, and it, it really will concentrate on third grade reading and tutoring kids in the third grade, so I think it's extremely important, and we'll, you'll get more information.
You should, you should start knowing how to read, yes.
You gotta pass them have a heart attack.
I know, sorry, Brett.
Brett's face is really red.
So is mine.
Should ride over there.
So is mine, so is mine. So, just a, kind of a recap on the Recreation Center, we, we have 3,103 patrons and members now, 3,000. Were we trying to get 700?
Yeah.
So, amazing, amazing job, 15,621 visitors to the rec center in September alone, 1,029 day passes in September, 1,951 teens checked into the Boys and Girls Club program in the month of September, so amazing, amazing numbers. Again, another amazing facility for the city, and again, kudos, Steve, to you and your crew, they've done an amazing job managing that. And I looked, I looked at this recreation report, and my mind just exploded, I mean, there's, there's so many classes and things on here, I don't know if you guys got a chance to look at that, it was amazing. And then lastly, don't forget, October 5th through the 12th is Fire Prevention Week, right, Chief?
That's this week.
Scott?
Yeah.
Fire Prevention Week? I'm trying to, I'm trying to plug you guys. Anyway, there's an open house at Fire Station 504, which is the one out on McCartney, on Saturday, October 5th.
That was last...
Or that was last Friday. There's also, is there's other events this week?
Tomorrow.
Pizza on Tuesday, October 8th.
They'll have firemen deliver your pizza.
Very good, so Domino's is gonna have firemen delivering pizzas, so that should be interesting, so order it, I guess you can order a Domino's pizza and get it delivered.
It'll be hot.
Does it come on a fire truck?
Nah, I hope not.
I hope not.
It'll be hot, though, right?
It might be expensive.
So much for savings, yes.
All right, I've got more, but I'm not gonna say anymore, because I'm already in trouble.
Yeah.
Anything else, anybody else have any?
Nope.
Anything?
Nope.
Is Larry anything, your last words?
I'm good.
All right, council meetings, stand adjourned.
Poor Brett, he's had a heart attack.